I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for October 20th, 2015. Invite you to stand with me if you choose as I provide the invocation. And after that Commissioner Hill will introduce someone to lead us in the pledge. Father, thank you for another wonderful day in our community and we pray that you'll give those of us who are charged with making decisions on this community's behalf wisdom as we address those issues as they appear before us. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Ms. Hill?
We're happy to have with us tonight Ms. Melody Wertz, a second grader from North Warren Elementary. She's gonna lead us in the pledge. And last week she was elected city commissioner in her school, so we're very happy to have her tonight to lead us in the pledge. Melody?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Perigien?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning is absent. Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
First item, our awards and recognitions. I understand that Operation Pride is here tonight with a business award for us. Ms. Angie Alexia from Operation Pride, thank you.
Good afternoon. Operation Pride exists to promote activities to enhance the name and identity of communities. We do that in a number of ways, probably the most visible to those who are not familiar with Pride. The most visible thing we probably do is the maintenance of Cemetery Road, 7000 where we obtained Scottsville Road, the Park Boulevard. This is not the kind of thing that people should be familiar with.
Angie?
Yes?
Excuse me, they cannot hear you at all.
I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize. So, we also present awards to individuals and businesses who make improvements to their property, and we really wanna applaud them for that because all those things make a significant difference to our community and not just in attracting business, but also in enhancing a sense of pride that we have about our community. So, that's really what we're all about, and we were formed by the city along with the county. So, I wanna talk a little bit about the award for this month. Do I even, I don't think I even need to have this open, do you want it?
No, you don't.
Okay, I wanna introduce Dan Murph, and I'm gonna ask him to come up here and join me. He made a bold prediction in 2012, that if he bought 310 and 313 East Main Street, no, no, it's okay, if he restored those buildings and brought some new businesses in, that that would begin the transformation of, not that block, but that kind of that whole area. And that has certainly happened. It's, they're beautiful restorations, and there are 15 businesses. I don't know if it's that building or those buildings now, is it kind of one building or is it still separate? Okay, combined buildings. So, I was gonna ask if he would say something about the, those are the buildings on East Main.
Yeah, upstairs, several of you have probably already been up there, but we have just kind of joint common spaces for businesses. And when I purchased the buildings, they were pretty much full of graffiti and the ceilings were caved in. So, anyway, it was some good, some good bones to the building, so it wasn't all that difficult, but it was very rewarding, and I don't know what else to say.
That's good, that's good. So, on behalf of Operation Pride and the community of Bowling Green, North County, we would like to present you with the Commercial Pride Award for October to 310 East Main and Western Properties.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Murph, and thank you for bringing jobs and businesses here to town. We appreciate that. Are there any other awards and recognitions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Lashley reminded me that the Public Works Department, in some degree, NCS received the annual Project of the Year from the American Kentucky Public Works Association. So, that's something we're really proud of. Jeff and his staff, as well as Brent, worked together to bring the project to fruition. So, it's something we're really proud of.
That project was the renovation of 707 East Main.
707 East Main, on time, under budget. How's that?
Thank you. Congratulations. And you have some other comments for us tonight, our city manager?
There'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason, and I have one more comment.
Pursuant to KRS 61810B for deliberations on the future acquisition of real property by the city, but only when the city would likely, only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use. And KRS 61810C for discussions of proposed litigation against the city.
So move.
Second. A Hill, second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
The other item, Mayor, is I know the commission, as well as you all, are, you are concerned about movement of traffic through the community. One of the problematic subdivision, um, intersections, thank you, is at Kenbell and Scottsville Road. The state is provided what we believe is solution. We wanted to vet that before you. Melissa Kansler's gonna present what is proffered as a solution by Kentucky Highway Department.
Kansler.
Okay, Melissa Kansler, City Engineer. Go ahead and bring that. Okay. Now, I added this photo. This is a shot of Kenbell Boulevard as you're approaching Scottsville Road. I was approached by Greg Meredith with the Highway Department regarding some improvements that they are recommending for this intersection to be done by them. They just kinda wanted our permission to work along Kenbell Boulevard. Many of us know that this light, especially in the PMP, backs up. Currently, the configuration is shown, you've got a left turn lane, a combined through and left, and then the right. What they are proposing, and I've provided to you, is basically removing the island, the median there. Because we do not need two inbound lanes, there are no two inbound from any direction, moving it over and providing an additional left out. So, you would have two left turn lanes, and then a dedicated through lane over to Three Springs Road, and then your right that you have today. So, it would require some removal of the island, some restriping to allow for that transition all the way back to Tray Court at their cost. He wanted to know if we were in agreement with this. We see no problems, they see no problems. The project would actually be part of some ongoing improvements along Scottsville Road that they're currently doing, so that they would just complete this as part of that. One thing also, you can barely see, is there at the Olive Garden entrance, I don't know if I can point this, that's not a pointer. They're gonna improve that radius, there's a, and I'm sure Ryan can attest to this, there's an inlet box, it's a continual problem, it's broken. People kinda have to stop to turn, so it slows traffic up. So, they're gonna improve that radius as well. So, I'm here today to just share these improvements. Again, no cost to us, they just wanted a kind of a nod to do work on our right-of-way.
Oh, Mr. Meredith, we'll be happy to give him the entire road if he likes all the way over.
I'll pass that along, I'm sure. He couldn't be here tonight, he had another public meeting he had to attend. So, if you have any questions, I'll-
Melissa, Commissioner Perigien and I were talking earlier about the design, and while it doesn't seem like that there's a need for more than one entrance or one lane going in there, you have a few motorists that for some reason decide that's the best way to enter that convenience store that's on the other side. So, if this were done this way, I don't know if that's a double yellow line that's proposed from the median back down there, or if it's some sort of a concrete structure.
It would still be allowed as a left turn in at this point. They did not have an indication, this is still preliminary, as to whether they would propose replacing, where you see the yellow paint, the proposed, that may in fact be an island, depending on, I'm not sure what they've decided. But it's my understanding they'll still allow that left turn into that business.
That's gonna continue to block people coming off of Scottsville Road, and you're gonna have a huge backup back in the intersection if just one vehicle decides they wanna turn into racetrack or whatever that-
They have some storage there to get in, a couple of cars deep, they'll allow it. And like I said, I can bring, or we'll definitely review the final drawing, final proposal, to see how many cars can fit in that. Again, if it causes a problem with their intersection, they'll propose some changes there.
A dangerous maneuver.
It really is.
Going across now-
It's a tough corner, it really is. And hopefully, the lane that they're continuing to allow, the straight, getting that improved entrance onto Olive Garden and all those restaurants, that'll win traffic.
Unfortunately, a lot of motorists don't consider the traffic that's behind them as to be any problem, but it is.
And the improvements here are gonna do two things, get people through the signal better, so improve that wait time, and then also, it's kinda confusing as you approach that, especially if it's backed up, which lane you need to be in. And then you get up there, and there's kind of a lost space behind that island that's confusing for some. So, I think we'll have a better clarity on lane designation here, and then obviously, with more lanes, you can get people through the intersection better, so.
Comments? Thank you very much.
Answer a question as best we have it today.
I wanna see a big concrete barrier, something that they can't turn left, that's just me.
I do know that that's a treatment that they're proposing at some other locations, so it could very well end up being something they look at here as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. DeFebbe?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Then we have the approval of minutes for the September 15th, 2015 meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigien. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
We provide an opportunity for public comments at each meeting. I don't see anyone here to talk this evening, so we'll go to the first item, which is the second reading of ordinance BG 2015-32.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedule. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedule G for general classified employees of the City of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2016.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigien. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2015-33.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of a portion of Scottsville Road, Frontage Road, from the intersection of Lever's Lane and extending north.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Williams. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-179.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Jennifer O. Edwards to the position of Administrative Services Supervisor in the Police Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigien, Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. With the retirement of Kim Clayton, this created an opening for Administrative Services Supervisor. We decided to keep the promotion internally. We had three candidates interviewed for it, and Doug is here tonight to put his promotion before you. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Just take a moment to briefly give you some information about Jen Edwards, who we were recommending for promotion into the administrative services supervisor's position. This position became vacant, as Mr. DeFebbe said, as a result of retirement from a longtime employee who served us well, but she's prepared the field for a new farmer, and Jen is that new farmer. She comes to Bowling Green by way of Connecticut. She went to high school in Connecticut, came to Kentucky, and has attended Western Kentucky University. She began working full-time for the city in May of 2004. She initially worked as a dispatcher, was hired as dispatcher, and from there moved into the dispatch supervisor's position. She then, in 2011, transferred to records. I think that was a benefit for her and her family, and now pursues another supervisory opportunity in our records unit. Jen has a bachelor's degree with a double major from Western Kentucky University in psychology and sociology, and also has a minor in criminology, so as you can tell, she's built for the law enforcement field. With her tonight is her husband, Matt, who's a captain with the Bowling Green Police Department, currently leading our training unit, and their daughter, Cadence. So, I would recommend wholeheartedly the promotion of Jen Edwards. Thank you.
How's the time when we ask you to stand up so everybody gets to see who you are? Congratulations, Jen. Thank you very much for your hard work. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-180.
Municipal order approving the transfer of Emily M. Angel to the position of Citizen Information and Assistance Specialist in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
So move.
Second.
A Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. As we all remember, Bobby Joe Sexton recently retired. Brent Childers reworked this position to meet the needs of the department. This position was retitled. We advertised, and we had a number of applicants for the position. We decided to hire from that field of 115 applicants, Emily Angel. Emily is transferring from dispatcher position, where she served both as a dispatcher and as a supervisor. Michael, is Emily here? She's not here, but I think she still wants the job. I understand. We recommend her appointment.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-181.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Logus Logan S. Thomas to the position of Labor Two in the Public Works Department.
So move.
Second.
A Hill, second by Perigien, Mr. DeFebbe?
We had another opening in the Public Works Department. We advertised, we had 38 individuals who showed an interest in wanting to work for the city. We interviewed six, in fact, we interviewed six twice, and from that process, we determined that Logan Thomas would be the best person for the position. He has experience in various industrial arts and running various equipment. Michael tells me he was not able to make it tonight, but still would like a job.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-182.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Carlos J. McCharge to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe?
As the commission may remember, we have a number of part-time positions in the city. A lot of those are located in Park and Rec Department. It's always an opportunity for one of those part-time people to become a full-time city employee when there's an opening. There was an opening in Facility Maintainer. We eliminated the class to those who are working part-time. We had seven people interview or show interest, and from that vetting, Carlos McQ, I'm saying that right? McCharge is the person that we feel should have the position. Michael tells me he is not here also, so. He is? Okay, Carlos, why don't you stand?
Time for you to stand up so everybody can see who our new employee is. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order, excuse me, first reading of ordinance BG 2015-34.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedule. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedule G for general classified employees of the City of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2016.
So move.
Second.
A Hill, second by Perigien, Mr. DeFebbe?
We're always trying to do things better and to save the public money. We're here tonight with item number seven to effectuate what is a new reorganization in lieu of Paul Correa retiring. I think it'd be important for Brent to, Brent Belcher, to give you a brief overview of his reorganization plan.
Belcher?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. DeFebbe. I'll be brief, I try not to speak too long anyway today, so Ms. DeFebbe mentioned this as a result of Paul Correa did 34 years of service for the Parks Department for the city. Throughout that time, our department grew exponentially, and Paul's a major reason to that. With that said, really similar, following the same path what we did with Tony Whitmer by combining the golf and parks maintenance divisions, bringing that under one umbrella, we're following the same path here to bring all recreation programs under the same umbrella, and that'd be underneath Adam Butler. Adam's been with us full-time since 2000. He's been with us part-time about five years before that, and Adam's, actually, the majority of his work history's in athletics, and then when I got promoted as director, he assumed my former role as Recreation Division Manager. So, he has, in my opinion, the skills necessary to supervise the Moxy Community Center, the Parker Bay Community Center, Special Populations, the Athletics, Fitness, and then the Water Park. With that said, Adam, in essence, our organizational chart would look like myself, be Tony Whitmer and Adam beneath me, in essence, being, we'll call them lieutenants if you will, if I can borrow a word from Mr. DeFebbe that he uses, and go and so forth from our organization. We, I do think it's a great time to mention the fact that I believe this sets us up for future opportunities as the master plan's coming up, opportunities to do other facilities programs and such, where the facility can best serve. I think we'll have the opportunities to provide that staff to basically provide those programs and leisure opportunities for our publics.
Tell them how much money you're gonna save.
Through our, actually, Adam's not the only upgrade, there's two others, there's a part-time going 52 weeks and some seasonal employees at the Water Park, but the city will save no less than $70,000 through these intermediate salaries, so that is-
Sorry, how much did you say, $7,000 or 7D?
Seventy, seven with four zeros. Yep.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-183.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Commissioner Joe Dunning to the Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee.
So move.
Second.
A Hill, second by Williams. This is oversight on my part for not getting that on the original municipal order when we created the Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee, so I apologize, we're just cleaning it up here. Thanks, thanks for Joe participating. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-169 needs to be brought off of the table, so I'll entertain a table, motion to remove that from the table.
So move.
Motion by Hill.
Second.
Second by Perigien. Please call the roll to bring it off the table.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And I will consider municipal order 2015-169.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2016-05 for the purchase of a specialized sign truck for the Public Works Department from Gilly Hyde Auto Group of Glasgow, Kentucky in the amount of $101,526.
So move.
Second.
Hill, and second by Perigien, Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. At last meeting, we talked about the need for us to provide a safer way for our employees to take care of more than 10,000 road signs in our community. For a number of years, we've been studying the problem. Chris Crowe and Jeff Lashley come up with the idea, as well as David Weisbrot, to have a vehicle that can be a work platform, a safe work platform. So, we went out to bid for both a vehicle as well as the working platform. Last month, it was tabled to allow us time to make sure that everyone was bidding on the same type of truck. We have determined with Rick's help and others that we are in fact bidding on an F250, 450 platform, four-by-four. So, we're here tonight to untable and to ask you to vote to approve Gilly Hyde to provide a much-needed vehicle. Chris Crowe is here, if you have any questions about this particular apparatus.
Comments or questions? Thank you. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-184.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of software subscription and maintenance services from Open Text Incorporated in the amount of $26,126.2.
So move.
Second.
A Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a variety of software maintenance programs for our computer programs throughout the city. One of the most important ones is that which oversees Microsoft Suites. That is known as Open Text. Lynn was able to negotiate a par contract with no increase, and we recommend your approval. Lynn is here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-185.
Municipal order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Freedom Dodge of Lexington, Kentucky, under the Kentucky Pricing Contract for the purchase of Dodge Chargers in an amount not to exceed $435,000.
So move.
Second.
A Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe?
Again, we discussed briefly the idea of purchasing 16 new vehicles. We wanted to make sure we were doing this correctly pursuant to purchasing policy. After studying this issue, we found out that Indiana has a unique reciprocity for providing for its municipalities to get, I mean, for its private businesses to get a special advantage. After discussing, we went out and decided to go with the state contract. It'll not only give us 16, 2016 vehicles, but it would also save us approximately $1,600. Rick, were you involved in this also?
Yes, and one reason that we wanted to investigate this further is one of the bids involved a dealership in Florida that had some 2014 models, and it's significant, it would've provided us significant savings. We did some checking on that, though, and the police package on those vehicles, even though the cars were fairly the same, the police package was different. And that would've involved a large amount of retrofitting to the vehicles, and it didn't seem to make sense, once you looked at the bottom line. So, we decided to, that going with the state bid contract was a whole lot better.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-186.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2016-15 for the purchase of vehicles from various vendors in the total amount of $366,633.12.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigien, Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the casualties of our most recent recession was our inability to buy much-needed vehicles and equipment for the various departments. The police generally were able to get their vehicles, but all the other departments were downsized in their request. We went out to bid to try to fill that need. We had a need for twelve vehicles. We went out to competitive bid. We had eight bidders who could bid on four different packages. From that process, we have tonight asked your approval to award the purchase of twelve new vehicles in various configurations on your bid package to three different companies. One is Freedom Dodge, the second is Gilly Hyde, third is Sam Swope, and Gilly Hyde got the fourth bid. Again, Chris Crowe or Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions about how we did this or why we did it. Please note that in your bid package, there were local bidders, and the local bid preference was applied, but it wasn't material in this case.
Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-180, I'm sorry, eighty-seven, yes.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2016-12 for professional architectural and engineering services for the renovation of the Sloan Convention Center lobby from Axiom Architecture of Owensboro, Kentucky, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon.
I think one of the things we're all proud of is our convention center. It has a niche market, and it always generally looks good. And that doesn't happen by chance, because we invest in it. Well, we're here tonight to hire an architect who will provide a vision and specs for giving a facelift to the center lobby. There was a three o'clock meeting, hopefully you all approved that, and so you're here again to approve it tonight, to hire an architect, which would be Axiom of Owensboro, for twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Additional comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Give me ordinance, first reading of BG 2015-35.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing five point zero zero acres from HB Highway Business to P. Public, located at the corner of Russellville Road and Hillview Mills Boulevard, presently owned by Baker and Hilliard Incorporated, with Warren County Extension District Board as contract vendee.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFebo.
Thank you, Mayor. With your courtesy and that of the commission, I'd like for you all to consider items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen in a family together. And Steve Hunter is, I know you have to vote separately, but Steve Hunter is here to answer any and all questions about all those items. Maybe Steve can come up to answer any of your questions.
We've received all the packet of information from Planning and Zoning, so we have knowledge of their meeting and information, unless anybody has any particular questions for Mr. Hunter?
But I do believe that is Baker and Hilliard.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2015-36.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning portions of tracts of land containing zero point nine nine acre from OPR Office and Professional Residential and P. Public to PUD Planned Unit Development, located at 716 10th Avenue and Park Street, presently owned by the City of Bowling Green, with Gemini Homes Incorporated as contract vendee.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Paragon. Again, we have the information in front of us that we've had an opportunity to read and study. Is there any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2015-37.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way, ordinance approving the closing of a portion of Rush Drive in front of 1895 Cave Mill Road and 2945 Scottsville Road.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2015-38.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning forty tracts of land containing eight point zero zero nine two acres from RM4 Multi Family Residential to RS1D Single Family Residential, located at Courtyard at Heartland Subdivision with various owners.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. This is a continuation of the community downzoning to make sure that the neighborhoods are stabilized as single-family housing. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2015-39.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing zero point two two acre from RM4 Multi Family Residential to OPC Office Professional Commercial, located at 528 Chestnut Street, presently owned by Robert H. Turner III, with Park Street Medical Plaza LLC as contract vendee.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by- Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-188.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and eight cents for a fire training system for the fire department.
So move.
Second.
Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFebo.
A couple meetings ago, we asked your permission to apply to Firehouse Subs for a hundred percent grant to purchase a training system for our fire department. We're happy to tell you tonight that we were able to receive almost all of our requests to purchase a simulator that our firemen can use to train, as well as we can use the public, to train the public for proper use of fire extinguishers. We want to obviously thank Firehouse Subs. They're, it's a company run by firemen, I believe, as the commercial says, so-
Started by firemen.
Started by firemen and given money to firemen, so that's nice. We recommend your approval.
Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, and we thank Firehouse Subs for their support.
Municipal order 2015-189.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the 2015 Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars for the purchase of in-car cameras for the police department.
So move.
Second.
Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFebo.
This is another a hundred percent grant. I want to thank Nick Cook for his work on items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. I want to thank him publicly for his grantsmanship work. But this particular item allows us to purchase five needed in-car cameras at a hundred percent on Homeland Security Grant. Nick's here, if you have any questions.
Questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-190.
Municipal order accepting and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement on behalf of the City of Bowling Green with the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet for Federal Victims of Crime Act 2015 funds in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
I think one of the proudest things and happiest thing you do every year, in addition to approving a budget with no tax increases, to accept this grant that helps the victims of crime. This is our twenty-third year of partnering with the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet to provide money to help fund Victims Advocate. April Fulcher serves in that position. We have to put out about nine thousand dollars, but we get about thirty-six thousand in return. It's one of our bitter things that we do.
Comments or questions? First time in the twenty-some years that April's gotten the grant that she hadn't showed up. She must be comfortable that we're gonna vote on it after a while, huh? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-191.
Municipal order authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant application with the Federal Transit Administration for federal fiscal year 2016 federal transportation assistance under the Section 5307 program.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFebo.
As a commission, the public know, we operate a bus transportation system through the community action that's heavily leveraged by federal funds. That's packaged through what is known as the Section 5307 program. We expect to get approximately one point two million dollars to help offset the cost. We have some investment in it. It's not a hundred percent grant, but it's heavily leveraged by the federal government. Brent Childers is here, if you have any questions about the nuance of the grant, or Nick, who helped write it.
Questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-192.
Municipal order approving amendment to the Title VI Civil Rights Plan for the City of Bowling Green Transit Program and authorizing its submission to the Federal Transportation Administration.
So move.
Second.
Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebo.
Thank you, Mayor. In providing bus services to the public, we have to do so in a way that's, is non-discriminatory, and we have to state that in a public policy. We have a plan to do that, and we're here tonight to ask you to approve an amendment to the plan that outlines our desire to not discriminate. I think it's important, possibly, for Brent Childers to come up and to give you a brief overview of what you're voting on. Brent?
As a requirement for receiving federal funds, we have to have a Title VI Civil Rights Plan. I drafted the plan last year, sent it off to FTA, got approval, everything was good. They come in in the spring, did a monitoring, a train or review, something that they do every three years. Somebody else looks at it and says, oh, you need system-wide service standards. So Nick drafts, Nick and Ken in partnership drafted system-wide service standards. We sent them off to FTA for their preliminary approval. We received word that they gave us preliminary approval, and also want to use it as a best-practice model for other trainings of other transit programs and through other FTA providers. So what this does is this sets our standard for service anywhere that we provide a bus service, so that there is the same standard of service, no matter what part of town that you live in, no matter what neighborhood you live in, that there is the same standard of service. And this is an amendment to our already-existing Title VI Civil Rights Plan that was amended or that was approved last year. So if you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to attempt to answer those.
Congratulations on that acknowledgement, too. Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-193.
Municipal order approving and authorizing execution of an agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Housing, Buildings, and Construction related to granting of additional responsibilities for building and electrical permits, plan review, inspections, and enforcement.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFebo.
One of the things we take great pride in is the city's relationship to the developer community and trying to facilitate the easy nexus between the city and private development. We facilitate that primarily by getting the state of Kentucky to allow us to do plan reviews. We've been doing that since 1980. We're here tonight to, again, authorize the agreement to allow Brent and his people to do most, if not all, of the general reviews. This is important, because if we didn't do it, they would have to go through the long queue of the state process, which would hold our growth back and not be helpful. So also, I want to mention that at our upcoming retreat, Brent's planning to present some ideas how we can improve our, continually improve our building permit process. But that's not for tonight, we're here just to do the agreement.
Call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2015-194.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for City Manager Kevin D. DeFebo to attend the 101st Annual ICMA Conference in Seattle, Washington.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning. I'm sorry, I have not crossed it off. Wilkerson.
Most answered. I'm sure he's watching at home, he answered when you called his name. Municipal order 2015-195.
Municipal order approving fiscal years 2015, 2016 through 2018, 2019 capital improvement program for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFebo.
For those who are into the science of budgeting, generally, there's two types of budget. One is the operating budget, and the second is what is known as a capital improvement budget, where over a longer time span, you identify in projects that you would like to do to improve your city. That's usually done on a three-year basis. We're here tonight to approve the upcoming capital improvement program for 2016, as well as to sunshine ideas for coming years. It's important to realize that 2018 and 19 are just ideas, and they won't become reality until you attach the money to it. Katie and Michael manage this process generally on a day-to-day basis, and Kate can answer any questions that you have.
No, it's a lot of work to put that together and plan ahead. I appreciate the work that you've put into it.
I'd like to thank Marilyn Paragon, she actually put the bulk of the work into putting this document together.
It looks to me like you put together a conservative but necessary program for capital expenditures. Are there any other questions?
There's no tank in there.
I'm big part-
There's no tank.
That's true. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Resolution BG WCCA-58.
A resolution of the City of Bowling Green, section of the Bowling Green-Wareen County Cable Franchise Authority, approving the transfer of control of the cable franchise agreement from Time Warner Cable Incorporated to Charter Communications Incorporated.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebo.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Gene Harmon to spot forth on what item number twenty-seven is that relates to cable franchising and your approval of the same. Gene?
If it sounds like we've been here before, we've been here before. If you recall, several months ago, the city was notified that Time Warner had entered into an agreement with Comcast pursuant to which our television franchise agreement would be transferred, basically with those two companies merging with Comcast. Followed not too long after that with the announcement that Comcast would basically sell off or get rid of, whatever you want to use it, with almost all the Kentucky holdings, with all those being assigned and sold to Charter Communications. Both of those were approved by the City of Bowling Green and Warren County, since we have a joint cable authority here. Both of them were pursuant to the approval of the federal government and all the regulatory agencies, and those mergers are actually taking place. Those mergers, the first merger between Time Warner and Comcast did not take place. So they announced a few weeks ago, a few months ago, that they were drawing that request that then automatically stopped the second transfer, since the first one didn't take[1610.31] place. On July 1st of this year, the mayor received a letter from Charter stating that they have now reached an agreement with Time Warner pursuant to which Time Warner and Charter will merge into a new Charter, then becoming Charter Communications, and that the Bowling Green franchise agreement would, the request would be transferred to them. We have 120 days to approve that, if not, it's approved automatically. There's not a whole lot of reason that we think not to approve this transfer for several reasons. One, Charter is a fairly big, they gave us an application, they say they're like the second-biggest cable company in the country now. They do have a number of cable systems around the country. They were in Kentucky at one time, I think they are not now, so this will be a new venture for them back into the state of Kentucky. But the things we looked at is Time Warner, are they substantially in compliance with existing franchise? I don't think we could find any basis to say they're not substantially in compliance. You know, there's, Charter now have the financial and technical ability to operate the cable franchise system in Bowling Green, we found no evidence that they cannot. This not only impacts Bowling Green, this is impacts, I think, all of Time Warner's holdings in Kentucky. So this will pick up Louisville, Lexington, Henderson, Northern Kentucky. So all of those will be considered as part of the same franchise agreement with them. With us, we're going to be a little bit different and unique, because the agreement we're talking about transferring is only effective for 14 more months. This franchise agreement expires December 31st, 2016. At that point, we cannot do another routine one- or two-year extension, because we're at the end of our constitutional authority for 20 years. So we're going to have to work out a new franchise agreement with Charter at that time, which will be some advertising, maybe one, two public hearings, whatever we want to do, but we actually have to follow through a more formal process at some point next year to continue it past that. But I'm here to recommend the approval of this resolution, there's just, in my view, no basis not to deny this request to approve. This one's also subject, of course, to federal approval and this merger actually taking place.
And this is not an exclusive franchise. Any cable company that would like to come in is welcome to come in, and we have no authority over content nor price.
Very good summary, you're right. This is not exclusive franchise, anybody can come in and open up. I saw an article, I think you, my manager sent me, that Lexington now has a new entity opening up another cable service there. So I think the city will more than welcome any competition if anybody else wants to come in. Most of the things we cannot control, we do have some regulatory authority over basic rates, that's the only rates that we have any authority over at all. And we have no authority to mandate that they carry a Louisville station, although during the negotiations, we will certainly bring that item up again.
As well as customer service standards.
We will look at, some things we'll have to sit down in the next few weeks and start thinking about what the city and county wants out of the next franchise agreement.